Good evening, everyone. I will convene our regular city council meeting of November 9th, 2022 and call our meeting to order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. For all of you that are able, please do stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is our open forum. So just to let people know what our open forum is, it is a regular item on our agenda where folks from the community can come and speak and share their thoughts with the council. They have up to three minutes to do so. It is not an opportunity for discussion with the council, just an opportunity to share and make a statement. There's multiple ways you can participate. So you can participate by attending in person. You can also submit your comments to our staff before the meeting, and those will be read by a staff person. And then you can also participate by calling online and phoning in. So the phone number is on the agenda and on the website, and the number is 1-415-655-0001. And then the webinar access code is 2469-813-5745, and the password is 1234. So I will check in with staff. I don't see anyone on the line. And then do we have any email comments that were submitted?
We do, Mayor. I have one email comment, and I can read it for you. My name is Sam Erickson. His address is 7327 Elliott Avenue, South. I am a longtime Richfield resident, and I have served our community as a Hennepin EMS paramedic for a decade. I've worked hard in hand, oh, I'm sorry, I've worked hand in hand with the men and women of the Richfield Fire Department for most of my EMS career. I'm writing because I'm concerned with recent reports that Richfield firefighters are being pushed out of the department based on the 10-minute living requirement. Specifically firefighter Caesar Garcia is having difficulty finding a home within 10 minutes of the city. He and his family live 12 minutes away currently. There have been huge increases in mortgage interest rates in the past year, reducing relative buying power. Furthermore, the area around Richfield is extremely expensive, and firefighters would be hard pressed to find houses in much of southwest Minneapolis and, and... Most disturbing of all, firefighter Garcia is one of the few diverse members of our fire department and the only Spanish speaker. I chose to raise my family in Richfield because of the diversity and the city's commitment to progressive values. It would be an embarrassing blow to lose the one Hispanic member of our fire department. I propose you take immediate action to suspend the living requirements for RFP members, especially considering the historic rise in housing prices and interest rates. Perhaps a 15-minute limit for the next couple of years would allow us to maintain callback readiness while recruiting a diverse slate of firefighters that look like the city they serve. I have emailed the mayor, the council, and the city manager this request earlier this week. They were very responsive, but cited concerns with interfering in HR policy decisions. We can do better than this. The mayor, the council, the city manager, and the fire chief must work aggressively to maintain the values the city has espoused. Thank you for your attention to this issue.
Thank you, City Manager, for reading those comments. Are there any other comments that were submitted via email?
No. There were not.
Okay, it looks like we don't have anyone online. Is anyone here in person to share comments in the open forum? Okay, looks like no one is here in person. We don't have any more emails, and we don't have anyone on the line, so I will close the open forum and move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the city council work session of October 25th, 2022, and the regular city council meeting of October 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next section is our presentations. We do have three presentations today, and the first presentation is the Civil Service Commission Annual Presentation, given by President Mary Stratton. I will invite Mary up to the podium for the presentation. Thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and council members, it is very nice to see you in person for the first time in a couple of years. I'm here this evening to present the Civil Service Commission's 2022 Annual Report. As you know, Richfield City Council established numerous advisory commissions to encourage citizen participation in city matters, suggest new programs or policies, and to serve as liaison with the city council. The Civil Service Commission is charged with recruitment and screening of firefighter applicants and is composed of three members who are appointed for three-year terms. Our commission, however, differs from other advisory commissions as our duties and authority are prescribed by state statute, specifically Minnesota Statute 4.20. Our meetings are held on an as-needed basis throughout the year. The commission met four times in 2022. The good news is that we welcomed six new firefighters: Caesar Garcia, Tracy Bolshin, Colin O'Brien, Austin Yantis, Bradley Mueller, and Joseph Kreider. Three of these hires were to increase staffing to nine people per shift, which the fire department has not had since staffing reductions in the 1980s. Further, we approved the following promotions: Josh Nelson and Alex Crawford to captain, Kevin O'Connell and Joe Ewald to lieutenant. We've also approved a new and streamlined testing process for captains and lieutenants, and the eligibility rosters for those positions were certified in October. Finally, the new firefighter eligibility list, which was originally created in December of 2021, has almost been exhausted and may require a new hiring process sooner than the two-year expiration date. The commission, of course, will meet again, probably towards the end of the year or beginning of the year if that is actually the case. Now, this is my final service Civil Service Commission Annual Report, as I am finishing up my second term as president of the Civil Service Commission. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve on the commission these past six years. As a side and personal note, I firmly believe that commission members influence influence policy, actions, and progress of our community and improves the quality and responsiveness of public decision-making. Volunteer commission members are excellent ambassadors, and we are advocates for the city. We help to create community ownership by sharing our talents and perspectives, and I strongly encourage citizens of Richfield to volunteer for these important commissions. Finally, as you know, firefighters are often the first people we see in a fire or health-related emergency. We as Civil Service Commissioners are not only proud of our fire department's response time, but also the professional care and concern that each member of the department affords our valued citizens on what may be one of the worst days of their lives. So in closing, I want to thank Chief Dobish and the firefighters for the stellar service they provide to our community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update with this yearly report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, President Stratton, for that report. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Trumpin.
I just want to thank you for those incredible remarks, because I think you just, you really described not just your service, but the service of all our commissioners who, who are all volunteers for folks that are watching at home. And I couldn't have said it, I could not have said it better, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Whelan.
I'll just say thank you for, for your service. I know that you guys have done a great job. I know you, you are part, you and the firefighters together share credit for just giving us a great department. And I have always appreciated the care that you bring, and this requires some attention to detail, and you're right, there's a very specific role for this commission, but you've done it well. And I have a hard time imagining who we're going to find to fill those shoes that will be just as good. But I guess we'll keep moving, and yeah, it will be great to have you involved in the community still in other ways. So thank you for your time on the commission.
Other comments?
I'd like to just echo the accolades that you gave our firefighters and our leadership within our fire. We're very proud of our firefighters, and as everybody knows, our community loves our department and, and really looks up to our firefighters. So we're very proud of them. And I just personally, you and I came in leadership together, and we will be leaving together.
That is correct.
So six years of service together. I remember that the day when you first applied, and I remember so many things you and I leading in many ways side by side, but it's just been really great to see you grow in your leadership. And yeah, I feel like in many ways, you're such an ideal model for what the commissioner role should look like, and it's really playing that role on the commission, but also connecting with community and really being that connection between community and their local government and being an advocate and a voice and, and helping people grow their leadership. So I'm really sad to see you go, and I'm super excited as well. And, and we've been very fortunate to have you in leadership for so long in the Civil Service Commission. So I just want to personally thank you for your, for your leadership and your time and commitment to us.
Well, and thank you for your service as well. As I say, we did come in together. And Mary, congratulations. And thank you. If you don't have any more questions?
No, so we got no more questions. Thank you. Thanks. The next presentation is the Transportation Commission Annual Presentation, given by Husniadet Bradley on the Transportation Commission.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, Maria, Mayor Maria Reagan Gonzalez, and you city council members for having us give our annual report. This is for the Transportation Commission 2022 Annual Overview. The Transportation Commission met six times in 2022. We met in February, April, July, August, September, and October. We had monthly meetings. The monthly meetings were not held due to a lack of substantive agenda items, as the larger projects that fall under the purview of the Transportation Commission are either under construction or in the final design process. For February 2022, the Transportation Commission welcomed new members. We had new Commissioner Jim Mahoney elected for the 2022 Officers, was myself, Husniadet Bradley, as the chair, and Jeffrey Walls as the vice chair. Communications and Engagement Manager Neil Ruland gave a presentation on the city's strategic planning initiatives. The transportation engineer Ben Monogbag gave a presentation on the city's upcoming speed limit review, including background information on speed limit, limit policies and possible approaches for deterring speeding. In April 2022, the transportation engineer gave an overview of three projects that the city was submitting for metropolitan council regional solicitation. The projects consisted of the 73rd Street Trail to Centennial Elementary, and the 73rd Street Trail and Bridge over I-35W, and the reconstruction of 76th Street West. The commission voted to submit all three projects for funding consideration. Transportation Engineer Ben shared that the city had been awarded a Safe Routes to School Demonstration Project grant at Richfield STEM or the Dual Language Schools. For July 2022, the transportation engineer presented initial insights of a crash study for Richfield Roadways, part of the initial steps in the city's study of the speed limits. The transportation engineer shared that the city had been awarded a second Safe Routes to School Demonstration Project for a trail connection on 73rd Street between Old Cedar Avenue and Centennial Elementary. In August 2022, the Transportation Commission held a group ride roll event and visited various sites around Richfield. It was very insightful and fun. Site visits included multiple schools, the 77th Street Underpass project site, and a visit to the existing 73rd Street pedestrian bridge over I-35W. The commissioners discussed various upcoming projects and initiatives, as well as current challenges with the city's transportation network. Bikes were provided by the Richfield Public Schools Bike Fleet, organized by Safe Routes to School Coordinator Will Lezio. In September 2022, the transportation engineer presented the design for the 77th Street Lindell Avenue traffic sign replacement and intersection modifications to be constructed in 2023. The transportation engineer also presented a draft concept for the Safe Routes to School Demonstration Project at Richfield STEM or Dual Language Schools, and also shared that the city had been awarded an Active Transportation Planning Assistance Grant through MINDOT. The grant will provide technical and planning assistance for Richfield to update its various transportation plans. In October 2022, we had a joint meeting with the city council, where the transportation engineer Ben Monogbag presented the city's speed limit study and gave a staff recommendation for setting new speed limits citywide. Council and commission provided feedback for staff, and is, and it is anticipated that staff will reconvene with the council and commission for further discussion in early 2023. No addition, additional meetings are anticipated in 2022 due to the departure of transportation engineer and commission staff liaison Ben Monogbag. And that is your report for the Transportation Commission.
Thank you so much, Chair. Are there any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Supple.
Thank you for that report. And I think it should be pointed out that Richfield is one of the few places that has a transportation commission, and so there's a lot more input from the residents. And I just want to thank you all for all the work that you do, because there is a lot of community input, and you guys kind of bring it all together, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Yeah, thank you for your service. I've been the liaison to the Transportation Commission, and I know it has been kind of a slower year than past years, but I always appreciate the discussions that we have. And I particularly like this year, one of the events that you mentioned, which was getting out in the community and riding around and experiencing those things. And I need to give particular credit to Chair Dem Bradley, because she was, she was willing to try her first e-scooter ride as part of that. So I got her out of my...
Saw you zooming past my house in a group, and I was like, what is going on?
Yeah. So you got firsthand of a new, a new travel mode, and that's the kind of experience we want from our commissioners. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for your work as chair.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Trumpin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Bradley. I appreciate your leadership on so many levels, and particularly on the Transportation Commission. That's, it's one of a couple of commissions that gets the most direct community feedback when there's tension, when there's differences of opinion. Also, our transportation and our upgraded roads and infrastructure are usually one of the first things that people who haven't been to Richfield in a few years say, wow, wow, Richfield is really looking great. Richfield's really developing well. And so I just want to recognize that, and, and thank you, thank you for a thorough report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whelan.
I just want to add that I think this started, this work started in the previous year, but continues to be leading the way among our, really all of our departments and commissions, but want to give a shout out to, to you and the rest of the commission, as well as the public works staff that work with you. You've really been leading the way around equity and looking at things from a lens of how does this impact people who have historically been marginalized by previous decisions and just racism. But just want to lift that up, that that continues to be a, a growing edge. I know that we, part of our strategic plan is coming up with a more citywide approach to make sure that's embedded in all of our decisions, and just want to lift up that it started with some of the transportation projects that you all are weighing in on. And I know that you personally have spoken up about that, how that impacts transportation projects. So I want to thank you and the commission for leading the way in that regard, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. And our public works department is recognized nationally and across the state and regionally. And I think that our, the role that the Transportation Commission plays in that is really important. Again, you serve as a connective tissue between our community members and the city, and I just love the engagement process that we use through Sweet Streets, where we get out in community, we, we do tours, we do engagements, and we ask the people, our residents most impacted, before something gets developed. It's like, let's, let's create this together in a way that's going to make improvements for everybody. And you're driving this every single day, you're walking this every single day. What are those areas that we need to be taking into consideration? And so, you know, it's, it's, I hear accolades all the time for our public works department from, from so many communities and organizations. But your leadership, Husniadet, and the leadership of the Transportation Commission is a huge part of that. So thank you for your annual report.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item we have is the Community Service Commission Presentation, and presented by Tessa Johansson.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Maria Reagan Gonzalez and council members. As stated, I am the chair of the Community Services Commission. We met almost monthly, I think, this past year, and it was my first year on the commission. A really great experience. There were also a number of other new commissioners that joined. And it was a packed year. I was kind of reviewing everything that we've accomplished, and what a, what a phenomenal experience just to learn and participate in the community. So I will kind of give you the highlights here. This past year, our commission received updates from our CSC, or Community Services Commission liaison, to the I-494 Visual Quality Action Committee, which was coordinated by MINDOT. We worked with the Sustainability Commission to provide feedback to public works on the city's tree replacement plan. We provided support and feedback for the proposed community garden project at Veterans Park. We assisted with the Monroe and Sheridan Playground Replacement Engagement Process and recommended council approval of the contract. We provided feedback on the proposed Taft Bike Park and Augsburg Skate Park Expansion Project. We also heard plans to propose a local sales tax to fund capital projects, including the public engagement timeline and the approval process. We considered the recommendation to remove the Veterans Park boardwalk and for safety reasons, for safety reasons, and voted in support. We also provided support and ideas for the Richfield Food Drive, which was an effort led by our former commission vice chair Heather McDonald. We received updates on the Richfield Ice Arena becoming home to the Minnesota Whitecaps hockey team. We approved a revised special event fee schedule proposed by recreation staff. We also prioritized proposed capital projects and recommended council approval of the 2022 Parks Recreation and Open Space Capital Improvement Budget. We appointed new and returning members to the Friends of Wood Lake Board. We also received updates on the plans to construct this splash pad adjacent to the Richfield Pool using ARPA funds. We received regular updates on the planning phase of a proposed new building at Wood Lake Nature Center. We provide guidance,
Um, yes, I will echo as the liaison to the group. Um, there, there was a lot this year, and I think, uh, it's especially exciting, um, similar to the Transportation Commission, that you guys get to work on things that are very visible to the community, um, people get to enjoy them. Um, and, yeah, that it was not, I mean, there, there is the always exciting, um, playground replacements that every year, uh, there's one or two, um, that get renewed, and that's fun to get the feedback from community members about that. Uh, but this year, yeah, there was the, the bike park and the skate park and, um, several additional things, and I, similar to, uh, that, uh, sort of ride and roll, or whatever it was called, that the Transportation Commission had done, I know that the group went out to see the, the state of the current boardwalk and to be in parks, and I got to go along, um, to see, uh, a bike park in another city, and so, um, just really appreciate the leadership of, yeah, not just making decisions in a room back here, but being out in the community to see it and get feedback. And, um, yeah, just thank you for jumping in and your leadership in your first year, and, um, all of the commissioners for your efforts, as well as the recreation staff.
Thank you. Other comments? Oh, wait, that was a no where he is. No. Sorry.
Good job, and thank you.
Um, and yeah, I just want to say, you are the Chair on your first year. That, that's awesome.
Yeah, that was a surprise, but.
Thank you so much for your leadership, um, and it, I'm really excited to see what the next year brings. It's really cool to see our parks and our recreation department, I feel like go through a huge revitalization, um, so many things that we needed were making happen, so thanks for helping lead that.
Mayor, I changed my mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say what we, we just shared publicly, or privately, which is that, that you, just how busy your life is and so many of the lives of our commissioners are, and so to not just take on this leadership role, but also as a chair, and just for folks that think there's just not time or capacity to, to serve civically, um, thank you for everybody who does. I know it's a sacrifice, you know, weeknights are precious, all the other times are precious, and so the city's better for it, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
All right, um, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments on the agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, the agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, which will be read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, there's just two items. Item A, consider the approval of a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation received by Richfield Recreation Services Department from Diane Elizabeth Gorni for Wood Lake Nature Center in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents, and to authorize the Recreation Services Director to apply the funds for Wood Lake Nature Center. Item B, consider the approval of a three-year contract with vitals for public safety and fire personnel, and I submit these two items as part of your consideration of the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any comments on the items? Um, Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to, um, say an extra thank you to the Gorni family for the generous donation to Wood Lake Nature Center. That's very, very generous, and thank you so much.
Any other comments? I want to echo that, wow, what a huge gift for our Wood Lake Nature Center and for our community. I also want to extend, um, the gratitude to the family for that very generous donation. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is to consider the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending section six hundred and one of the Richfield City Code to include new language clarifying the definition of, quote, "non-RDU's," and how properties approved for exemption from the contracted program dispose of solid waste. Um, the new garbage code adopted last year is based on language and definitions adopted in the new residential contract. After adoption, some clarifying language was determined to be necessary to further specify which generators are covered by the city's contract, as well as which are covered by commercial collection and which are not. Um, does staff have anything to add on this item? No.
You don't, we're available for questions.
Um, then I would make a motion to approve the attached ordinance adopting the amendments to section six hundred and one of the city code and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please, oh, um, any comments on this? I forgot to ask. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember, um, let's see here, oh, Hayford O'Leary, thank you.
Uh, this item is to consider the recommendation to migrate from J.D. Edwards to a new financial software package that includes Oracle, Oracle Enterprise Resource Planning, and Sprite Point Utility Billing as part of our contract with local government information systems, Logis. Um, I think I'll just call on staff right away to, uh, give the reports, since they'll be providing background, Assistant Manager. I'd like to give you a report.
Sorry for the delay, Mayor and councilmembers, we're trying to get the presentation up.
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. My name is Saktamvadam, the Assistant City Manager and the Administrative Service Director. I'm here tonight to present the proposed financial software migrations from J.D. Edwards to Oracle. Uh, I just want to take this opportunity, uh, just to give some background on that also. You'll hear me reference Logis, and I'll give some background on, on what Logis is and how we participate. Uh, Logis is a local government informational system. They were founded in nineteen seventy-two by seven communities. They included Golden Valley, Crystal, Eden Prairie, Edina, St. Louis Park, Coon Rapids, and Brooklyn Park. Uh, and the city of Richfield joined Logis in January of twenty, uh, twenty-three, nineteen seventy-eight, and that was referenced, the, our utility software program. Now, just to discuss some of the services that we receive from Logis, uh, again, we started off with the utility billing, uh, and then we migrated into additional support from Logis, and they, as you can see from the, from the PowerPoint slide, there's a number of services, but some of the main services that we receive from Logis is, uh, hosting our backup, our servers, uh, also providing software training for a number of different softwares that, uh, various departments use within the city. Uh, and then the, the purpose of Logis was, uh, uh, Richfield, just some history with it, Richfield had, has used J.D. Edwards since, uh, July of twenty, uh, two thousand and two. Uh, part of the process for, uh, looking at it, uh, our J.D. Edwards system right now is about twenty years old, so as you know, technology advances very quickly on even on an annual basis, and the partnership cities that were involved with Logis decided that, you know, this is the time to take a look at the software, because right now it's not working for a number of the various cities. So the, so Logis took the initiative with the member cities to establish, uh, a cohort group of agencies to take a look at the current software, is it functional, does it work for us? Uh, they said it didn't, and we need to take a look at other software. So the, they formed an eight-member ERP selection team, and they also partnered with the Government Finance Officers Association Research and Consulting Center, and the purpose of that was just because they had more experience, but also they were able to refine the requirements of the various communities and their needs, also created the RFP, and then guided the selection process, and then they were involved in the price negotiation for, uh, the proposed new software. Now, the slide that's coming up right now is the Logis member total cost breakdown. As you can see, uh, it's, it's a very large financial commitment, but also a time commitment for the city. So there's two parts within, uh, the process that, um, that Logis selected and the group selected. So one of it is the Oracle Enterprise Resource Planning, that's the ERP system, and then the second is the utility billing, that's Sprite Point. So there's two points, there's, there's the software annual cost to it, and also the, um, the implementation cost within the, the program, or within the, the software. So the total cost for Logis, for the Oracle system, is about four million dollars, the implementation cost is about six million dollars, and then Sprite Point Cloud Utility Billing is about two million dollars, and the implementation cost is about two point two million. The next slide you see is the, the actual financial impact for the city of Richfield. As I stated, it's a long-term commitment, this is a ten-year commitment for the city, and the Richfield costs, uh, for the ERP system is, will be a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, that's on annual cost, and that's a twenty-three percent increase from our current system right now, and the implementation cost is about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Sprite Point Cloud Utility Billing, uh, is going to be a ninety-three thousand, one seventy-one, that's the annual cost, that's a nine percent increase from our current cost, and the implementation cost of that is going to be about a hundred and, a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Well, the alternatives that we have is, we can continue with J.D. Edwards, uh, the problem with that is, is limited support, or we can explore our own tier-one, um, provider independently, which is, is going to be difficult just because our staffing level and also our expertise, too. Uh, Logis had the consultants that, that did a lot of the vetting part of it, and went into, uh, the, uh, price negotiations, so that, that does, would, that would take a lot of our staff time. Staff would recommend the city continue with Logis, the migration to Oracle and Sprite Point, and recommend council to approve the attached resolution.
Is that the end of the presentation?
Right.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Any comments or questions from council on the presentation or the item? Councilmember Whelan.
Um, I know we, we already discussed this at a work session, but I'll just repeat a couple of comments from there. I think, uh, frankly, I, I'm amazed that we've lasted twenty years on a, a software. Um, certainly appreciate, uh, staff making it work thus far, um, and that it has maybe saved us a little bit of money, but it is beyond time to invest more. I think a twenty-three percent cost increase over something we started with twenty years ago is perfectly reasonable in the technology world, and frankly, it's time that we've invested more in our, um, IT needs as a city, um, to keep up with, um, just the pace of technology, and that this will certainly improve, uh, the internal efficiency, um, experience of our staff, um, but also will, um, pieces of this will certainly reflect then, I know this is not our only software update we're making, but will improve our staff's ability to spend more time externally facing, um, serving the community, and so, uh, support this. I think the, um, decision to stay with Logis on this, um, makes a ton of sense, and appreciate all of the, uh, research and, um, information you've shared with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, and thank you, Assistant City Manager. Um, this is a really big project, and, uh, similar to Councilmember Whelan, uh, just for the benefit of folks that might be watching and didn't see the work session, um, one of my questions was, you know, why and how we need the ten-year commitment, and, and, uh, you explained, yeah, and really well, along with, uh, folks at the Logis, uh, is, is we were able with other cities to collectively, uh, get the best price and lock that in over a long period of time, uh, as a collective group of cities, and that that's a more competitive opportunity for us. And, um, you also, I think, explained the onboarding and offboarding process, too, and I just wondered if you, could you talk to that, too, just explaining, like, how many years it takes to really integrate and upgrade these systems, and it, just maybe speak to that a little bit, because I thought that was really helpful.
Yeah, but just, as mentioned in, in the workshop, um, a transition or migration like this takes, takes a lot of time, not only a staff capacity financially committed to the city, but also when you take a look at it, it takes, uh, anywhere from six months to a year to even get, migrate all the, all the data to the new software. Then you have anywhere from three months to six months to do training, and that's only just, even with the finance department, uh, you have to do a lot of internal training, uh, and then to get up and running, you're talking about two or three years. Uh, by that time, uh, then you get into the year four or five, as explained before, in terms of, uh, just getting used to the software and the use of it and, uh, the capabilities of it. Uh, even to this day, we've been on J.D. Edwards for twenty years, and there's a number of modules that we still haven't used yet. Yeah, you know, modules that we probably should have used years ago, but now they're outdated now, and they're, and not as efficient as the current models.
No, we're, I'm really looking forward to this, so, and I know it's a, it's a heavy lift, like you talked about, to bring everybody on board, uh, as, uh, as, as not just a team, but multiple teams. So I know your work's ahead of you, in bringing this on board, so thank you.
Yep, uh, staff is very excited about it. One of the things that I, we got to mention, as we mentioned in the workshop, was that originally, uh, like you stated before, that this is a heavy lift for staff and also, uh, Logis, too, to get up and running. Uh, and then the, we were actually looking at, in terms of implementation migration in twenty twenty-four and even twenty twenty-five, but the HR manager and also the finance manager and myself were involved in a number of, uh, demonstration of the modules, and after going through the, the different demonstrations, um, we wanted to go on the, the new software as soon as possible. So now we're actually looking at, instead of twenty twenty-four, we're actually looking at, uh, end of third quarter or beginning of fourth quarter in twenty twenty-three, and that, and that's just because of the, the advancement, advancement in technology and the software, and the, the modules that are within there. Part of it is also there's an HR module that's in there. Currently, right now, we use NeoGov, but hopefully with this module, we can, uh, be on one system, and, and just going through the modules, I mean, there's just so many efficiencies things that, that are included in that, that's going to really help the staff do our work.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Supple?
I, um, just wanted to think back to the strategic planning when we were talking about things we needed for operational excellence, and they talked about all of the infrastructure we needed with technology and how we needed to bring it up to speed, and it's really exciting how quickly you guys have spent, starting to turn things around and, and putting this into place, so thank you for doing that, because it does seem like it's following on those strategic priorities. Thank you.
And, and I would agree with that also, and thank for the council for reporting the staff on implementing a lot of that, and also, like you stated, too, in terms of the technology. I mean, we've also moved really quickly and fast, and, and it's the, it's the support of the IT department, too, but we've moved really quickly on even Microsoft three sixty-five, and we're hoping we can implement that fully to the citywide by December first.
Other comments?
Um, I'll move approval of the attached resolution approving a ten-year commitment for the Logis ERP and utility billing software applications.
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Mayor, Mayor-elect Supple, also, uh, Councilmember-elect Karen Christians, and I also want to recognize, uh, candidate, Puzia Dent Bradley. Um, we have a really strong tradition, at least since I've been here, of very positive and hard-fought campaigns, and I really respect that, and that is not the case in other cities. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item is claims and payroll.
I'll move claims and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to move claims and payroll. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item is hats off to hometown hits. I'll start with Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. First and biggest hats off goes to all our residents who voted and participated and held up democracy. Also have to thank our staff, especially our city clerk, Carrie Sinning, who I think is, I understand, is taking a well-earned night off. And so if she's listening, I hope she's not. I hope she's enjoying herself. But I just so grateful. Also, we just did some rough numbers. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and myself, and I believe that that Ward 1 rallied after some early flagging numbers and ended up, we retained our title of the highest percentage voters, but but really, Richfield overall is above average in the state of Minnesota for voter turnout, and Minnesota leads the nation in voter turnout. And so, Richfield, we are just the pointy tip of the electoral spear in terms of people caring about our community and participating. And so, thank you, Richfield. Thank you, residents. Thank you for participating in our democracy. And to our new colleague and to Whoznea Dent Bradley, grateful for everybody's participation, but democracy, there are people that that I really supported and won and people that didn't, and democracy is always held by people who don't win. When you don't win and you decide, I'm still going to participate in these institutions, I'm still going to participate in community. And so special thanks to Whoznea Dent Bradley and and everybody at every level who participated, whether they won or lost. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
What was it? The spear of democracy? It's so violent. I was going to say pretty similar things, but thank you, not that I don't like your imagery, Councilmember Chapman, but thank you to everyone, the residents who showed up. Every ward was over 60%. Ward 1, as Councilmember Chapman noted, was over 70%, and those numbers were just my own rough estimate. I'm sure when the city clerk, who did an amazing job yesterday, is back on duty, she will give us the exact numbers, but I'm really impressed at how people turned out. And yeah, thank you as well to our new council colleague Sharon Christensen and Whoznea, who ran a great campaign as well. Yeah, it was, there were a lot of good things and some things that didn't go as we wanted last night, but it was just great to see everybody turning out. And it is such, I love how many voting options we have in Minnesota, but I do like to go in person on the day of, because I just love the civic spirit and the energy. And it was great to see, you know, a bunch of poll workers that I knew, people showing up, a reasonable but enthusiastic line. So it's always a good experience. It was great to see some of my neighbors there voting for the things they care about.
Thank you. Mayor-elect Supple?
Thank you. I also was going to thank all of the people that participated in the elections, all of the residents that came out and voted, and the people that voted early, and the people that voted through absentee ballots, and thank the election staff and city clerk Sinning and all of the election judges and everybody that participated and all of the candidates as well. So thank you to everybody involved with that, and I'm very excited about moving forward with all of this. I also wanted to thank our veterans for their service, and as you know, Friday is Veterans Day. And the Honoring All Veterans Memorial always has a some kind of a ceremony, and so this year it's going to be at 5:30 PM on November 11th. So I would encourage people to please attend that, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Wayland?
I would just echo my comments were also about democracy, and I think the the one group that I was most impressed with this year and want to thank, I think, I certainly grew up with the notion that who you voted for and politics was like a dirty subject, and you should keep it to yourself. And I think part of why we've had such record turnout in recent years for elections is that people are realizing that politics is our everyday lives, and they're talking about it, and they are sharing with their neighbors what they care about, their vision for our community, looking into like who is representing that. And so I am deeply honored in my day job. I get to work with a bunch of leaders who want to do that work, want to talk to people about their vision for their community and how we get there, and which candidates are running to help us get there. And it just was, I was out on leave and not doing much with them for a good portion of the season, but the number of people who have been working not just for the last few days, but for months, talking to people about what can be possible in our future and what kind of community, county, state, country we can build together is really just awe-inspiring. And so thank you to everyone who voted, who helped facilitate the literal voting process, but also thank you for every conversation you had about the future of our community. And I hope that those continue now that we all go to the work of governing, that democracy is a year-round group project, and I hope folks continue to be engaged in pushing us and your other elected leaders to be what our community needs.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Wayland. I was so inspired by the people power of people showing up at the midterm elections. So very inspiring, and I don't know what I'm going to do with all my free time after I'm out of out of this role, so you know, I'm really looking forward to being an election judge and working in the polling places and getting really nerded out and getting people out to vote. So and engage in their democracy and not take it for granted. I want to invite everybody to a community meeting that the city of Richfield is hosting next Thursday, November 17th. It is only a short three hours long, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We will be having it at the Richfield Middle School Auditorium, and it is led by our police department. So we have a national expert who's coming in, who conducted a study on bias within our disparity analysis. He conducted a disparity analysis of our community demographics in our policing and is going to share the results of that study. So we're super excited to have community conversation, answer questions, and talk about what does it look like in Richfield in terms of do we have demographic disparities in our policing practices and talking about addressing those together. So the information is on our website, the information is on our Facebook page as well, and on our social media. So next Thursday at the Richfield Middle School, 6:00 to 9:00, we will be hosting a community meeting to talk about policing. And I think that's everything, so I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.